All right. Welcome to the study session for February 8th, 2022. Tonight we'll be hearing from the Oregon State Marine Board. The presenter will be Josh Mulholland. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you. So am I as at my cue, am I ready to go?
You're ready to go.
Okay. Let me get my slides up here. First of all, thanks for inviting me to this. Thanks for having me. I know that I initially agreed to this way back in September, I believe. So things, some things may have changed since then, but I think some of the interests for the council for the, in the Marine Board are probably still valid. So I'm happy to come here, happy to talk with you about what we do, our authorities. My plan is to give you a presentation that is modified from a presentation that we gave to the state legislature last, last spring about our agency as far as our budget presentation. I stripped out some of the very boring numbers parts of it, but it's a good, very quick overview into our agency. And then I know there were some specific questions that the council had regarding authority, role making. I prepared a few slides on that, but I'm trying to leave a lot of time for, for question and answer. So I'll try to make this brief and then we can, we can interact and the conversation can take us wherever it goes. So thumbs up if that sounds good. I'll just, we'll go with it. Okay, you're all seeing what I'm seeing? Okay. So like I said, I'm going to give you the 10,000 foot view of the agency and then address some of those specific questions. So first, come on, there we go. Just our, our mission, our stated mission that we serve recreational, with the recreational boating public through education, enforcement, access and environmental stewardship for a safe and enjoyable experience. We are the state's recreational boating agency. We are just recreational boating. We have a very limited purview for a state agency. So we have a, you know, a pretty, pretty limited focus. A very brief timeline of our agency with some significant dates, including some funding milestones. And the most recent one I'd point out, the most recent big thing, the waterway access program, which for the first time created a funding mechanism for our agency to fund non-motorized access projects. At our creation, we were all recreational boating, but at that point recreational boating was motorized boating. It took a lot of work in the legislature over the last really 10 to 15 years to, to kind of bring non-motorized boaters into, into our purview. And the waterway access program has done some, some really awesome work in a really short period of time. And if you have questions about some of, some of the things that, that that program has done or anything else, you know, we can, we can do those at the end. We do a strategic plan every six years. I think we're working on our 2022 to 2028 strategic plan right now. I'd rather you not tell our director, but I hate working on strategic plan type stuff, but it's part of the, it's part of the exercise that we have to go through. It's a good thing. But things that we pointed out, the last time I went through the, the planning process was, you know, our agency, we want to reduce boater conflict and improve boating access. I would say those two things more than anything else are what we continue continually like, you know, focus on. Our motto unofficially has been, we try to balance safety with opportunity. Make sure everyone on the water is safe, but make sure that there's, there's as much opportunity for people to enjoy Oregon's waterways on different types of boats as, as much as possible. We do have an education component, improving boater proficiency is an important thing for us and just generally connecting with boaters to ensure that we are receptive to their needs and to other non-boating stakeholders who also have an interest in Oregon's waterways. So again, I'll be real brief with the, with the agency stuff. We're a small agency, I think 38 FTEs as of right now. And I'll go into the, the different programs that we have a little bit in depth and the different functions that we all serve. I oversee our, I shouldn't introduce myself, I apologize. My name is Josh Mulholland. I oversee our, our policy and environmental program. That is our, we have some, some environmental programs I'll get into, but I'll see our, also our rulemaking, our legislative policy type stuff is, is, is in my purview. So I'm going to go into some of these programs, kind of with the, from the biggest to the smallest, just to give you a sense of what we do. The first one is our boating safety program. It is our biggest program. It is our most expensive program. So we're a state marine board contracts with 32 of the 36th county sheriff's offices around the state as well as state police for marine law enforcement. It's, I should note here that we don't have enforcement authority. I don't have marine law enforcement authority. There are many times where I wish I did or wish other staff did to address issues, but we rely on our relationships on those contracts with the sheriff's offices. OSP only in some limited areas, but for the, for Milwaukee, for populated areas, we, we contract with that, that sheriff's office. So they are our eyes, ears on the ground as well as our enforcement arm. I want to go a little, little off message here for a second and point out that overall we have pretty good relationships with the county sheriffs. But as I have to point out often, just because you provide some funding for a sheriff's office program doesn't mean you get to tell the sheriffs what to do. That is, that is not how our relationships work with the sheriff's offices. In some ways it would make my job easier if it, if it did, but we provide, we are obligated to provide funding for marine, marine law enforcement, but they ultimately determine their marine law enforcement needs within their county. And depending on, on some of the things you guys want to talk about later, that might come up again. We do provide training and equipment to law enforcement officers. We most likely purchase that boat that you see in the picture. And this is a, a training that we do for new law enforcement officers every year at Lake Billy Chinook to get them kind of trained up into how to be on water enforcement. We get some sheriff's deputies every year that have never even been on a boat before, let alone feel comfortable doing law enforcement out on the water. So, so we, we are providing that training. Our voting safety program also implements our mandatory boating safety education program. If you recall from the timeline, that went in place in 1999. We consider that to be a pretty landmark legislation and anyone operating a motorized boat in the state of Oregon with a couple weird exceptions must have a boating safety education card, prove that you've, you've been given that education similar to a driver's license, although it's not technically a license. The next most significant program within the Marine Board is our facilities program. First, always got to put this disclaimer out there that we do not own or operate any boating facilities. We have our money or, or some sort of technical consultation, technical support in, in almost all of them, especially all the, the public ones around the state, but we don't own them. Counties own them, cities own them, you know, Milwaukee owns one. And if we've provided funding, we'll have a grant relationship with them, but ultimately we don't operate these facilities. However, we have a lot of funds that go through this facilities program. Just for an example, last biennium, over $4 million was, were spent on buying properties for a municipality, for a county, for some non-motorized projects as well as renovations at almost 40 other facilities around the state. Some of them are, are, you know, oh, project or facility overhauls. Some of them are as simple as replacing a bathroom or installing a kayak launch or improving parking. But if it is a boating facility around the state, more often than not, it does have some, some Marine Board involvement with that facility. So some other smaller programs that we have, I'm not going to go into detail in, but again, I just want you to understand what we do. Our first and foremost task is to register motorized boats. At this point, we have just over 160,000, 1,000 of them registered in the state. So we have significant, you know, significant program, just, just doing those registrations, doing titling, facilitating people being able to buy our, our products. We do register all outfitters and guides in the state, and that's not just boating guides or fishing guides. We also do hunting guides and biking guides and hiking guides. And I know that we do a couple stand-up paddleboard guides as well, but they all go through our agency, why the legislature chose to put that program in our agency. I'm not entirely sure. I have heard it said that it used to be with Fish and Wildlife and then some guides got mad at Fish and Wildlife. So the Marine Board has the outfitter and guide program. We have a clean marina program. It's one of the environmental programs that one of my colleagues oversees where we have a relationship with ports and marinas, making sure that they're good stewards of the environment. I mentioned the mandatory boater education program. At this point, I think this figure is actually like about a year old now. We're getting close to, to, I know over 400,000 boater education cards have been issued since 1999. We have a contract with SOL for their adopt a river program. We're pretty involved with that and something we're pretty proud of. Something that the city of Milwaukee might not be as interested in, but I can promise you that your neighbors directly to the north are, is our abandoned and derelict vessels sub account. We have a small amount of money that the legislature allows us to put away towards the removal of abandoned and derelict vessels. That has become an increasing issue in the, in the Portland area and one that we are grossly underfunded to deal with, at least on our own, but through a partnership with, with Department of State lands, DEQ, we now have some federal involvement with the Coast Guard and, and NOAA as well as Multnomah County in particular. There's starting to be some movement on that front, but if you spend any time on the Willamette, a little bit downstream of you, you see that there's plenty of work to be done and not a lot of money or frankly, political will to get it all done. The last thing I'd mention here is our aquatic invasive species program, which is in many ways, just a money collection program for Department of Fish and Wildlife. We collect boater funds and we, we provide that to Fish and Wildlife through a yearly contract. We provide some consultation, but we really facilitate that program. So the boat inspections that, that you may be aware of, that stop boats with zebra mussels and quaggo mussels from coming into our state and contaminating our water bodies is a partnership between the Marine Board and Department of Fish and Wildlife. Just because I think it helps provide context to, to what our agency is, some of our priorities. I have both of our revenue and expenditures for the last biennium, just to get an idea of where our money comes from, what, what may drive some, some, some internal decisions. We don't get general funds. We don't get lottery funds. Everything that we get comes from boaters in some way, shape or form. Most of it's registration and titling and other significant portion is from fuel tax that we get from ODOT. So they do an estimate of how much fuel goes in boats and then that money comes to us. And then there's some other smaller programs that you see there. And then the money going out, you know, three quarters of it is to, to law enforcement and to boating facilities. There's the admin parts of our education program that pays things like my salary, for instance, and our educational components or campaigns, but we are, we are, we are pretty straightforward, straightforward from a budgetary standpoint. There's also that aquatic invasive species program, which is funding, which goes to, to Fish and Wildlife. So that is the quickest that I think I could manage to go through our agency and, and do it justice. I also provided the council with a letter that we had provided to legislators in the past with a link to a fact sheet that has a little more details, but I don't think I was asked here to talk about our agency, the structure of it in detail. So if you have any, any questions about, about the agency in general, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm going to get into some of those questions that I know that you had and then, and then I'll kick it back to you, to, to the council. So there's some questions over our jurisdiction. Everything within our jurisdiction comes through the legislature. We are an executive branch agency. We are, we do not have any rulemaking authority except for where it is provided by the state legislature. It is laid out in ORS 830, 100 to 200. And it is, it, our jurisdiction is pretty limited to recreational boats. And it's not all things recreational boats. It's just the things that are pointed out. We, we must register boats. We have rulemaking authority there. Funding law enforcement facilities is specifically called out. Promoting boating safety is specifically called out. The one that's usually of interest to municipalities is the fact that we do specifically have authority to make boating regulations for areas based on a number of factors, congestion, safety concerns, environmental concerns. I mean, things like slow no wake zones or, or, or no watersport zones or, or 20 mile per hour speed limits or anything else you, you can think of where we could limit a boat's operation. We do have, have that authority, although there are some, some caveats I'll get into in the next slide. And then there's also something that unfortunately Mayor Gamba, I know that we, we have talked about recently and we're still actually working on is there's a provision in our founding statutes that says that no local jurisdiction can enforce or can implement or enforce laws contrary to ours or contracting to the state's boating laws. So if we don't have a slow no wake zone and Milwaukee decides to put it in a slow no wake zone, that is preempted from 8:30, 40. Not saying that that's going to happen here. I'm just saying that that's a, maybe a poorly chosen example. So Counselor Beatty, you had asked about authorities on the Willamette River. And I don't think you, that's a very complicated question because there are a whole bunch of authorities for different aspects of things that happen on the river. And I'm going to tell you, this is not necessarily even an exhaustive list. But we'll start with us. We, we do the operation of recreational boats and small passenger vessels. And I point that out because we don't do commercial boats unless it is a very lightweight commercial passenger vessel of less than a hundred tons. And I bring this up here because there is a lightweight passenger vessel, less than a hundred tons that operates on your stretch of the Willamette River that causes some conflicts and complaints to come, to come through our office. And so we do have regulatory authority over, over that kind of commercial activity, but nothing over other commercial activity. State lands does own the, the submerged lands in this state in most, in most areas, including most of, of the Willamette. So anytime anyone wants to do anything on state lands, whether it's as simple as anchoring a buoy to the bottom, anchoring there for, for a period longer than is allowed or putting in a, a structure like a dock, that's going to have to go through state lands permitting. Generally DEQ has, has some oversight over all things water quality, general environmental concerns and then Fish and Wildlife, concerned about Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife habitat. So just from the state perspective, if someone wants to put in a dock, for instance, and there's a very high profile case that I'm sure you, you're aware of, right across the river from Milwaukee where someone wanted to put a dock pretty far into the channel. And I know that they had comments against that project from, I think every, every jurisdiction on here, certainly from a Fish and Wildlife standpoint, we had concerns from a, a boating navigation standpoint for having structures that far, far out into the river. And state lands, at least at this point, has not granted, granted a permit for that dock. There's also some, this is a federal federally navigable river after all. So they maintain some, some federal jurisdiction. The Coast Guard has jurisdiction over commercial operations. Commercial boats do not register with the state in any way. They're strictly with the Coast Guard. Coast Guard's very concerned about vessel navigation in the federal channel in which they claim ownership on. I can tell you that if, if we would start to talk about slow no wake zones in their federal channel, for instance, that would limit all boat traffic, they have claimed that they would come in and, and claim preemption. Basically say, you know, the state, state government does not have the authority over the federal government in that regard. We often try to consult with them on anything we do from a boating operations standpoint, and we often get very little back, but if they, if DC decides that we've, we've overstepped our bounds, they'll let us know. The Army Corps has the whole Willamette system with all the, the dams to control the water flow. They're also very concerned about maintenance of the channel as well as structure permitting. So if someone wants to put in that dock, they're also going to need a permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers. And then NOAA has some concerns over especially endangered species. So docks that go, that cover shallow water habitat, for instance, NOAA gets pretty concerned about that because that's been shown to be detrimental to, to salmon and it's moving through the area and makes them more likely to be ambushed by prey. And then local municipalities, you know, have control over things that go on the water by, by building codes and also, and Milwaukee's no exception here. Many municipalities have public access to the river. And while boating laws are outside of the jurisdiction of the, or the authority of any, any municipality, authority over how someone uses a municipality's public property to get to the river is very much within the jurisdiction of the municipality. The best example of this is, is the Lake Oswego situation where Lake Oswego, state contends is a very public, open body of water. There's nothing that stops someone from helicoptering into that and using it publicly. However, the city controls access to that body of water and they have determined that the general public cannot use those, those accesses to access the water. I put a note in here just because I don't want to forget. I mentioned how we contract with sheriff's offices. However, the statutes and the administrative rules for boating say that all peace officers, state, county, local may enforce provisions of, of, of those, or just of those boating rules. So there's nothing that stops the city of Portland metro, city of Milwaukee. I've been in conversations with the city of Gladstone recently about an issue that they're having at one of their facilities. They can enforce the laws that, that the legislature puts in place for boating and that the Marine Board puts in place, the roles that we put in place as well. So actually accidental segue, but that works out well. There are always questions about our rulemaking process. And generally speaking, we have rulemaking authority over most things recreational boating. There are some things that, that have been pointed out to us to where the legislature did not give us that authority. We may have overstepped our bounds. There's some, there's some questions right now over whether we can mandate that, that children wear life jackets. That's a role that we've had in place for 20 years. But there's a recent court case that said the legislature actually didn't give us that authority. So we're looking at a potential legislative fix there in, in 2023. So for a rulemaking process, and I have these pictures up here. These are from our Boat Oregon map. This is probably the most single, most used resource on our state website or on our agency website because it has a visual representation of, of all the state's boating rules. You'll probably notice that at least the photo on the right, that's a representation of what's in place currently in Milwaukee right now. Hag Lake on the top left, there's some interesting boating rules there. And while usually we're doing things like slow no wake zones, buffer type zones, we also have some more unique rules like the ones that were recently adopted for North and South Twin Lake into Chutes County where electric boater, they used to have, we used to allow no motors and now electric motors are allowed for folks that have a disability, that have evidence of that. So that was, that was a rulemaking that we did a couple of years ago. So our rulemakings take many different shapes and forms. A rulemaking is typically prompted by one of three things for us. It is from concerns brought forward either by staff or by our law enforcement partners. Last year, a deputy in Klamath County was concerned that this area, there was an area being used a whole lot by swimmers. It was also becoming kind of a jet ski launch slash play area. And so we asked, hey, we got to do something to separate these uses. We made that area a slow no wake zone. So the jet skis still launched there, but couldn't play where people were swimming. We have rulemakings that are prompted through legislative action. Usually anytime that there's a, a bill affecting boating, it requires us to clarify some points in rulemaking. Or the, the third one, and probably the most likely one at this point is a rulemaking that's prompted by a public petition. So any member of the public can petition us to do any role within our authority. And we are statutorily mandated to follow a process, assuming that that petition is administratively complete. And we've accepted some petitions that are not even quite administratively complete because we kind of get the gist of it and we see the problem and we, we want to help address it. If we accept a, before we even accept a petition, we'll get some public comment on it. Our, our board will hear it. And then if we do accept it, we may start a rulemaking process to address the issue. We may or may not address the issue in the way proposed by the petitioner, but we will go through a rulemaking process. But we also might not adopt rules at all, but by accepting a petition, we say, hey, we see an issue here enough to, to investigate it further. I hope that, that you're at least aware of the, the rulemaking process that we went through from 2019 to January of last year, an 18 month rulemaking process for the lower Willamette River that culminated in the rules on the screen now. And this is a snapshot from a piece of educational material that we put out to the public. But that rulemaking involved hundreds of stakeholders, a rule advisory committee, six straight Marine Board meetings where we, we've talked about refined ideas, went out to the public for more, for more input. I know that the city was involved in providing some of that input and I truly thank you for that. I think that that all helps our board make decisions. This one was incredibly complicated. I think where we got was, well, I have to think it was good, but I do, I do think we arrived at a, a set of, of rules, maybe while not perfect and slightly overcomplicated, does a good job of maximizing safety and opportunity, like I mentioned in the beginning of this presentation. I was asked, how was this past boating season? What lessons have we learned from it as far as these rules? I would say that it was successful overall. I will say that educating people of rules, getting that message out there is a challenge, will continue to be a challenge. Compliance with new rules, especially on this scale is challenging in over a one-year period. It usually takes three to five years before you get, we found, you know, overall public knowledge of, of rules. But again, I think this year went, went well. I think a lot of the conflicts were mitigated. And I do know that, that limited law enforcement presence in, in much of the lower Willamette will continue to be a challenge to, to any kind of role implementation going forward. And it's something that we're looking to address through non-law enforcement measures at this point, looking at trying to hire some, we call them boating safety advocates, but putting some people on the water at boat launches without badges, but can inform people of rules. They can't cite people necessarily, but just some information spreaders because law enforcement is getting so stretched, certainly in Multnomah County, and that's also true on the, on McLachemus County. They also have other priorities in, in other water bodies not on the Willamette. McLachemus being chief among them. And they're also having a terrible time just hiring officers. McLachemus County has reverted funds back to us the last two biennia because they're not able to, to hire people and keep them in those positions to do, to do marine law enforcement. And this is the last, the last thing that I got, but I wanted to mention anytime we are doing anything, we are obligated to go out to the public. And, you know, we would do so even if we weren't obligated, but, but it's, it's good to get that public perspective. This is a snapshot from our webpage on our, our new rules and notices. This is current as of today. There's one thing that we have out for public comment right now. It is essentially an administrative fix to our small grant program to allow us to get money out the door more quickly to municipalities that need to do minor repairs. This is a pretty minor one. I don't expect to get any comments at all. When we are doing big impactful rulemakings, ones that might have some, some significant opposition, we will hold at least one public hearing as well. Those have been held virtually the last year and a half, but I'm hoping that we can start to transition back to in-person meetings because it's always a good thing to be able to go to a community, hold the meeting, you know, where the interested folks are. And then all these comments, any, any testimony that we get at hearings, that all goes to our five member Marine Board who's appointed by the governor and they, you know, lead our, our agency's policy decisions. So that is it. And I'm going to stop sharing my, my screen. I hope that was, I hope that was generally what you were looking for, but I, I expected a robust kind of question and answer here. So thank you for your time on that and Mayor for having me. And I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss anything you, you'd like.
I know Lisa had a question there.
Yeah, sure.
I had a few along the way, just kind of clarifying some of the things you said. And one of them was about the federal channel that, and the, the, the fact that the feds claim to preempt or would preempt. Where does the federal channel end? Where does federal? Where does federal, I mean, I know there's some arcane ideas of navigable waters of the U.S. in the code, but does it end at the locks? Because there's no getting through the locks and the feds have disclaimed responsibility for the locks. So where does the federal channel begin and end?
It's, so to be clear, Counselor, I shouldn't be the one giving you this answer because I don't work for the Coast Guard and they're sometimes challenging to work with because they have a very different power structure. I will say functionally, their channel, or at least where they care about, ends at the locks because there's no commercial traffic going through the locks and above. We went through some significant rulemakings in the Newburgh Pool of the Willamette River, so right above the locks. And it was at that time where at least the person in charge then, and this changes with whoever's in charge in D.C., the Coast Guard gave us very different things during the Trump administration that they have in the Biden administration. But like above the locks, we don't care. Below, we do.
Okay. And then you talked about accepting a petition. Can you parse that out a little bit more? Like there was recent, I mean, there are some petitions you think don't, aren't substantive enough that you, or don't raise a substantive enough question, so you don't address them, I take it? Yeah.
So there's, so then the petition process can get a little bit confusing because there's multiple, there's multiple public comment periods depending on the direction. If a petition is administratively complete, and that's actually a very low bar, any state agency is obligated to at least consider it and accept or deny it within 90 days. We follow that very strictly. I can't speak to some of the bigger agencies who I know might just put petitions in the garbage. We don't do that. As long as it's complete, we're going to solicit comment on it. And then it's going to come to our board, and that's when we're going to decide to either formally accept it, which is an admission that, yes, this raises a problem that needs to be addressed, we need to look at this further, or deny it, which doesn't preclude the board from exploring a solution more. It's just saying, hey, the solution that's been proposed here is not, this is not what we're envisioning, but thank you for bringing this to our attention. Like we just did one of those with an issue around West Lynn and Gladstone, where there is an issue that we're working to solve, but the framework that was brought forward in the petition is not what the board was interested in. Did that answer the question or did I make it more confusing? Because I think I might have.
Well, no, I think that was helpful because that was one I had in mind. Like you did circulate that one for comment, but then quite quickly after the close of the comment period said, yeah, that's not the way, we're not going to pursue a rulemaking on that. So that means you didn't, the board didn't accept the petition.
See, on that one, they did not accept the petition because they didn't, accepting a petition does start rulemaking. This is one, though, the board was very clear with me and our staff that we need to find a way to solve this. On that specific example, I had concerns that the solution brought forward was not going to solve the issue, and the last thing I wanted to do was put rules in place that that work followed up on. So that's an example where I think the petitioner will ultimately be happy, even though his suggested procedure going forward was not the way that we chose to go or the board chose to go.
And I appreciate the piece of information that Clackamas County, I appreciate the piece that you gave us the information. I'm not, I'm disappointed to hear the information that Clackamas County is giving back funds. And I think that is a conversation we may want to try to have with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office about beefing up enforcement capabilities. The one other question I had was about when you have to notice or how you decide who you have to notice. Because I think one of our big frustrations last year with that Lower Willamette rulemaking was we got zero notice from you. We learned about it, I learned about it from City of Portland, and I only inquired of them because I saw something from Willamette Riverkeeper. That's how we learned about it. That doesn't seem like the way state agencies should be doing business.
Fair enough, Counselor. I'm not, I wouldn't even disagree with you on that. We are mandated to notice all of our interested parties, anyone that's on our interested parties list. And again, that's true, that's not a Marine Board guiding thing. That's a statute for every executive branch agency. And every time we do a rulemaking, the biggest accusation that we get, whether it's from private clubs or municipalities, is, well, you didn't, you didn't notice us. The only defense I can give is that in some cases, we don't, I don't know what I don't know, and I don't know who I don't know. We always notice the sheriff's offices because, I mean, they're on our list, they're our partners. We don't make it a point necessarily to make sure that every local municipality is noticed. I would like to do that. Some of our rulemakings are pretty wide in scale where they're statewide, and I simply don't have contact information for every county and town. Counselor Beatty, you're not wrong, and I hear your frustration on that. There is some limitations in knowing who I need to notice, and I guess I'll just stop there.
Well, and, you know, like I'm on your list, but that doesn't satisfy, I mean, I won't be a city counselor forever, so, you know, it should be the recorder, the, you know, the city manager's office. It should be something that will be there so that you don't have to keep track of elected officials who come and go. But it does seem to me that somehow the cities along the Willamette, you know, Oregon City, Lake Oswego, West Lynn, us, Gladstone should have been noticed. And I hope that you will find a way to get the appropriate city office. Again, it's not us elected officials, it's somebody who will be some office in the city, some email address or whatever that will be there for the long term. But I hope you'll find a way to get those to be part of your distribution.
No, it's a fair, it's a fair criticism, Counselor, and one that I'll note. You know, we did reach out to park staff at all the, for the municipalities that had parks because there was some interest on our board in effects to their facilities. The fact that that communication did not, was not connected to the council is unfortunate. I'd be the first to admit that. Those are our contacts. We've, we've had issues with, and to be honest with you, Milwaukee is one of them, with significant turnover at some of those staff positions where we lose our contact information. This is not so much with me, it's more with our facilities people. That, I know that there's been challenges with Milwaukee Bay Park because of staff turnover and differences of opinion and understanding of our grant agreement with that facility. I'm not trying to defend some of our processes here, I'm simply just, I know some of the reality there.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Anna, I'm the city manager here. We actually have some set emails that we can distribute easily that wouldn't actually have any turnover associated with them. They would automatically be sent into the city manager's office or into the correct person. So I'll just email you tomorrow. I don't, you don't need to worry about it right now, but we'll get you a list.
That's, that's fine. I mean, at the very least, if we can make sure that the city manager position is on our interested parties list, then that should address some of these concerns going forward.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you have more?
Well, I don't want to hog the time. I do have more, but I'll let other people go that I have things they want to bring up.
Not seeing anybody jumping at the, I'll ask a quick question. I was under the impression that Lake Oswego lost that in court. Not that that has anything to do with any of this, but you mentioned that, you know, somebody could helicopter into that lake and use it, but public access was denied because they controlled the entry and exit. And I thought it would take into court, and I thought they lost.
So they, they, they lost, they tried to say that the water body was not a public water body, and they lost on that front, which was what we contended, the state contended all along. They still have, the case ended with, and I'm no expert on that long, that long court case thing that was sent out, but they still have the ability to restrict certain uses from their property. Like I, from what I understand, I can't go kayak on Lake Oswego right now. So they've, they have held on to that unless something has changed very, very recently. Because I know that there's a petition by a group brought forward to them, and I don't know where that one is, I read a news story a couple of months ago. But, no, I don't want to dwell on Lake Oswego, but we still, as a state, we view that as a, as a public stewardship failure, that a water body could be privatized.
Looks like it's going to trial this year.
I.
Really?
I just, I don't know, I'm not looking at the document, I'm just looking at a news story. I think we're, Mayor, maybe, are you thinking about the Oregon Supreme Court? It was, it was sent back to the trial court, so.
Okay, so I must have caught it at some point when, on one flip or another, that it had done, that the city had lost that, but, so it's interesting that it's going all the way to Supreme Court.
It's been established that it's navigable water, which, from our definition of navigable water, of course it's navigable. But as far as whether they can control the access and determine who uses it, who doesn't, that, I believe, was sent back to the trial court. So yes, thank you, Counselor.
So Lisa, go ahead, keep going. Somebody else has something, raise your hand or whatever.
Okay.
So Kathy, she did.
This is just a super quick one. I, it was pretty clear from your presentation that any concerns we have about the materials that are used in exploitation materials for docks, that is a Department of State lands question, correct?
So weirdly enough, Counselor, no. That is, those are statutes that were, I would argue mistakenly included into ours. Because they don't really fit in state lands either, so they had to go somewhere. I believe, and so, full disclosure, I am, I'm involved in conversations with the Department of Justice right now on this topic. Because I brought this to our board in January, I was like, look, we are completely supportive of more restrictive foam encapsulation rules. There's, the need intent here was never to be like, hey, this is the limit. But I don't think, I don't think the legislature realized that that contrary local laws thing created a problem. Now, I do believe, and I have one of my colleagues, Mayor, I know that you've been talking to Dorothy Deal on this. We have some ideas on ways that this can be achieved through your permitting and your ordinances in that way. And I'd like to meet with you, discuss those options. But I am also seeking guidance from our legal folks on what do I need to do to allow Milwaukee to do this? Because we're all on board that we want to. I just, I didn't realize that this question was going to be a little more challenging than it seemed on the surface.
That's good to know, appreciate that.
It is good to know. You know, it's, having spent, what is the last, geez, I've been doing the Willamette River cleanup for years, more than a decade. And every year that I do it, you know, we're hauling big things out, but the vast majority of the trash I see on the beaches is styrofoam. And you, without a vacuum cleaner, you could not clean it up. And that is eventually going into the ocean and eventually into the stomachs of seabirds and, you know, fish and all those things. So there's, you know, and we have the technology clearly to contain that. You know, the two flaws I saw in the state rules were, one, the containment, the containments allowed were, some of them were far too flimsy. And then the other one was that there's no, it says it must, must be able to last for 10 years, but then there's no ancillary rule to that that says, and in 10 years it must be inspected to see that it's been removed or, you know, there's, there's no, there's no sunset, right? It says it must be able to last 10 years. So then, you know, common sense would say, okay, and then in 10 years you have to take it out and replace it, or it has to be inspected, or some, something which doesn't happen. So these things sit there, sometimes they become derelict, they get loose, the logs run into them, whatever, whatever, and we end up with just, you know, metric tons of styrofoam, which is a lot of styrofoam because it doesn't weigh anything, spread throughout the Willamette River.
It's, and additionally, and this is not good news, but there's also, there's no enforcement of those rules to my knowledge at all, outside of maybe a complaint of a very flagrant example where a sheriff's office would respond, but they're not necessarily well-equipped. They do boating safety stuff, they're not well-equipped for what is an environmental violation. It's, I would argue that it's kind of, it's a regulatory gap. But at the very least, I, whatever we can do to empower the city to do what they want to do is, we're completely on board with.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, it's our Clean Marina Program, the primary focus is to be part of that program. You have to be a lot more strict than those, than those roles to participate in that. Foam floating around is simply not okay.
So can you talk a little bit more about the restrictions that apply to our part of the Willamette, the last year's rule? And specifically, it's 100, no, no wakeboarding boats, no wakes within 100 feet of shore or of docks? Is that the?
Yes, so for your, for your stretch, it's, it's pretty simple. For the entire Milwaukee stretch, it is slow no wake within 100 feet of any on-water structure, technically any structure permitted by Department of State lands. In theory, they all should be, but that's not always the case. And give me one moment, I'm going to bring up a visual here so we can look at it on our webpage. In addition, no one can wakeboard, which is not a very common activity, or pull tubes within 200 feet of any docks. And these regulations were not novel for, for the Milwaukee area. Like they have been in place in the Newburgh Pool upriver since 2019 with these buffer zones from docks. So no wakeboarding or tubing within 200 feet of docks, and then for the entire stretch from the locks to downtown Portland, wakesurfing, which is the most flagrant activity, the one that bothers people the most, the ones that causes the biggest wakes, that activity is completely restricted. And that's what draws a whole lot of ire from our opponents who are none too pleased about us regulating them off the water.
And so, but there's no restrictions around, along, about the shoreline itself, or like El Rock Island or anything, it's all just restrictions within 100 feet of docks. So we have a dock in Milwaukee Bay Park, but that doesn't protect very far, I guess.
For most boating operations, no, there are a couple reservoirs where there are shoreline restrictions. But for most boating operations, outside of jet skis, jet skis are regulated pretty hard and they have some buffers from shore. But for other boats, it is, they're statewide, there are not many at all. I can't think of any specific examples where there is a, you know, slow no wake or X speed this distance from shore. So it is not for shores, it is on those structures.
I will say that I have heard anecdotally from, you know, people who lived here 40 years ago, that we, there has been quite a bit of erosion off of El Rock Island from, you know, presumably from wakes or maybe from other river functions. So if Milwaukee, and I'm not saying, you know, we haven't discussed this, this is just a hypothetical I'm pulling out of the air, but if Milwaukee wanted Milwaukee Bay to be a no-wake zone, that's something we could bring a petition to move.
So absolutely. And can I have permission to share my screen again, just so I can get a visual? Is that okay? We'll see if I can actually do it. So here's, here's the current regulations for this area that I've been mentioning. So these buffer zones are because they're So these buffer zones are because there's a dock here. So, here's a slow no wake zone. And within this buffer, there's no tubing. And then this entire stretch with the pink line around it, this is all your no-wake surfing. And then here's, every public access has additional restrictions on it. Has a 300-foot slow no wake zone that you see here. Or 200 foot, I'm sorry. But, so when you're talking about Milwaukee Bay, would you be looking at... Are you able to see my mouse?
Yep.
Okay. Would you be talking about this, the whole kind of bowl? Or some area kind of where I am right now?
Well, I think that's a discussion we'd have to have. I mean, when I think of Milwaukee Bay, I think of it as from the mouth of Johnson Creek, which you can see right there, yep, to Elk Rock Island. That's what I think of as Milwaukee personally. But I don't, you know, we don't have an official definition for the city, so that's just my view.
I think that would probably be about accurate. I mean, the old log deck was down there, just north of Elk Rock Island. So, that's where the commercial use of the bay was.
Is there... Josh, could you, using just your arrow cursor on that same visual, show us roughly where the channel is, the federal channel? I think I know because I know where the buoys are, but, you know, your best stab would be helpful.
Well, I'm going to do more than take a stab because that's a layer on here that I just got to find. All right. Maybe it's not that easy. And I think it's on here. I'm just, I don't know if I can find it. Could be on a different map. I'm not going to mess with it more. I would, I know that the channel comes pretty wide around this point. So, maybe give or take what I just did with my mouse.
Okay.
And that's subject to change, and that's, I mean, to an extent, depending on what the Army Corps thinks. And the presence of the channel there, to be clear, it does not preclude us from doing anything. I wish I could tell you how interested the Coast Guard would get in potential regulations. The reality is I can't. I struggle to get emails back from them half the time. So, if that was something the city wanted to do, then I would ask to, you know, have a public process, get input on that. Just so that if the city asked, petitioned us, I could then take it to our board, and I'm happy to help do a petition process. I do it all the time for many different folks. If I can point to a public process and say, look, the city went through this. This is in the best interest of the city, and here's the evidence that they have. If our board says yes, you know, we agree there's something to be done here, and at the very least, there is certainly some logic into your kind of general proposal. And there's a lot of mixed use that comes out of Milwaukee Bay Park that may also necessitate that. Then we'll deal with the Coast Guard and see if the Coast Guard has any big-picture problems. But they might not. They might... Commercial traffic up to this point is pretty limited. There's only one commercial operator that I know that will be pretty outspoken, but that's only one entity.
I will say that this became quite an issue when there was a discussion about putting a bike pedestrian bridge across the Willamette River. And the design was required to accommodate that channel and the height of, you know, Navy ships effectively because the Coast Guard weighed in on the process. So, I love your optimism there, Josh, but I have recently seen the Coast Guard sort of flex their muscle to retain some authority in that channel area.
Does the Coast Guard care about no-wake zone? I mean, they aren't normally dealing with boats that are going fast. I can think of one commercial user that's accepted that.
It's just that if you had a ship the size of a Navy ship go through, you cannot move slow enough to not have a wake. So, I think that's where it comes in. I hear you.
You talk about them flexing their muscle. That's kind of exactly it. But when they do, there's little the state can do. And I know that we've had issues with them on how we've added on a feed or boat registrations, actually for aquatic invasive species. And they threaten to pull all the federal funding that we get from different boating taxes and stuff at the federal level. No, they have authority, and I can't imagine a scenario where we need the Navy in Oregon City, but it is their mandate to maintain that channel. That's... The Coast Guard's a great partner, but we look at things differently. Recreational boating is not in their purview whatsoever. It's simply just not something they care about, and they make that very clear.
Well, I could go on all day, but I know we have other things on our agenda, so I'll hold the rest of my questions. But I appreciate you coming, Josh, because it was good for all of us to hear it. And hopefully, some of our... I know we've had a few residents watching in, and then this will be available on YouTube later and on our website, so people who are interested will have a chance to listen in. Because we do get calls. I mean, I certainly do. I live fairly near to the river, and I hear a lot about noise as well as speed on the river. I mean, I hear those concerns a lot.
We certainly hear a lot, too. So, I would just, and the sheriff's office hears a lot, too. And we often defer those things to the sheriff's office. Again, we are not the enforcement arm here. I don't have that ability. If you or any other counselors, the city wants more information, is looking for ways to implement the city's views or the city's plans on the water, you know, feel free to involve me in the process. I mean, I'm here to assist with things like that. That's really part of my job. We're not trying to be obstructionist here. We consider a lot of different viewpoints, some of those that will come from outside of the city, so just be aware of that. But we might be on the same side.
I attended about, I don't know what it was, 10, 12 years ago, the hearings on the Holgate Channel in City of Portland. So I've seen the active participation on both sides, indeed.
I was, that was long before my tenure here, and all I've been told is just thank God that you weren't around then. No, I'm glad that some of our recent rulemakings did not necessarily take that tone. While there was passion, they were civil.
Mayor, you're muted.
All right. Thank you again for coming in, and I look forward to working with you on the floating structures rulemaking.
We will be in touch with you soon to set up a meeting, just to... I'm interested in what other options that we both might have to facilitate that. So, yes, continue conversation there.
All right. Take care. So our next item tonight is the Fish Herons Art Project Discussion. It has staff being Scott Stoffer, but I thought, no, okay, Scott's doing it. I would have sworn that we were going to see Natalie.
Evening, everybody. This is just a, hopefully, relatively quick item. But as the staff report laid out, and as I think we announced at the last work-in regular session meeting on the first, the city's been in discussions at a staff level with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron and the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District since the fall, when the tribe presented a proposal for art installation at Milwaukee Bay Park. The working title of that artwork is "The First Fish Herons Art Project", and it involves, as laid out in the staff report, and which includes the tribe's proposed document. I believe at the moment, it's three plinths would be installed for seasonal installation of renditions of herons. There's all sorts of details to be worked out with that. The proposal was presented to the community at the January 19 Arts Committee meeting, and I hope counsel had an opportunity to watch that. I know a couple of you were present. I hope members of the community were able to watch it. It was a great presentation. Some good questions were asked, and since then and before then, as the word about this project has gotten out, staff has received nothing but positive and very supportive. Basically, how can we get out of the way to make sure this happens sort of comments? So, the goal at this moment tonight is to check in with the city council, see if you have any questions about the proposal, and then ultimately, what staff would like to know is if council is okay with us to continue or to start the process of negotiating an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, with the tribe and the Parks District to make it happen. So with that, that was pretty much what's laid out in the staff report. If there's any questions, Anne, I don't think I missed any points on that.
You didn't. I think that because this is just letting us know where we're going, we don't need a formal vote. We can't do one during a study session anyway. But just a general head nod from you all, this is where we're heading, and we will start working on it. I know that David is actually working down at Grand Ron this week to pass the same thing, pass the leadership of the tribes. And then we'll be working with MCPRD. So I just want to call out again how much I deeply appreciate Scott and Jordan working so hard on this project. It's really been quite a process, and I've been very impressed.
It's been an amazing conversation so far. It's great to work with David and Travis from the tribe. And I see Heather from MCPRD is on here, too. They're great partners to work with on this. And Natalie and Peter and Adam have been involved as well. So it's just a real win, I think, for our community. But having said that, any comments, questions from counsel that we can field right now?
Yes, I love it, and thank you for all that you've done. Sorry, Lisa. We're on the same wavelength tonight. The presentation was really wonderful to see. I'll triple echo that it's worth watching. It's available on YouTube. It's definitely worth your time. It is super cool, and I'm so excited that we get to host this installation. It's really, really wonderful. So thank you, Scott, for being sort of in the thick of those conversations for a really long time. It's amazing work.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend or to watch that night, but I did catch it over the weekend, and I thought it was awesome. I was very excited to see it, so I'm really excited to see it move forward.
Yeah, I think it will be extraordinary. I'm very excited, too.
Perfect.
Yeah. There are details that will need to be answered, funding placement, what the plan looks like, how the program we manage going forward. Those are all things that we have to hope to work on. If counsel or anybody in the public has any comments on that, you're welcome to email me. Probably easiest email is one that they read all the time, ocr@milwaukeeorgan.gov, just shoot me a line and we can get included. If you have any thoughts. But other than that, staff will proceed, and we will report back to counsel when we have updates. Thank you.
All right. So, anything else? Kelly just popped up. Do you have something to tell us, Kelly?
She's running the MRC tonight, so she's just waiting for your next meeting.
Okey-dokey. All right. Do I have an actual script for that?
Yep, it's the same one that was in the study, with the study session.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Perfect. Let's take a five-minute break.